All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the February 28 Budget Workshop. Town manager is going to review the individual town budgets this evening, so we will have Carl go through it all and then we'll have our discussions.
Okay, first out of the box tonight is senior services. So as I alluded to during a bunch of presentations, this department will be growing. I flagged for you before during the forecast that this would also be an area that could grow, so you can see the cost. So that's growing both in terms of salary line item for the Park Island, as well as expenses associated with delivering programs to proceed. So the salary increase is not a function of rate at this point, it's a function of increased hours of work. The original budget, when we passed that last year, when we hired Christina, we settled it at 12 hours a week. It's taken to 19 and a half hours a week.
Keep it part-time status. The additional program cost is providing additional funding to support some programs that have got strong community interest and building off of the dollar amount that was provided last year. So the cooking program has been exceptionally interesting amongst active seniors, as well as kayaking and some other activities. We did put some additional funding in for trying new things, not just expanding that which is popular. So this is just sort of continuing the commitment to a program to the seniors and taking advantage of the strong public interest in what's been offered. Any questions on seniors?
That's great.
If not, then that takes us to WPCC. So WPCC's budget is not significantly changed from where it was last year, and I think the expenses are kind of known at this point with the council, but I can go over it again. Salaries is for a part-time clerk in order to service the board, as well as there's an employee function here that's done, not just backing up the clerk, or backing up the board. Professional Services pays for out-of-pocket expenses associated with the engineer. Then a number of the other expenses are associated with water testing, so you've got surface water testing, well monitoring, and the like, and it ends with $7,000 for the pump boat. It's no change from last year in their operating budget. Any questions on WPCC?
I do. Somewhere in the reading here, I came across a line item, apparently it wasn't underwater pollution, for water being delivered to people by town mandate or town edict or something. Is that under, did I see that under general government or?
Yes, that's not under WPCC.
All right, okay, but it is something that's incurred because of them, correct?
I'm not sure what the full genesis of why we have that payment that we make, but...
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's budgeted differently than a WPCC expense. If there's nothing else, this takes us to Park and Rec. So under Park and Rec, you've got full-time and part-time, so just as a reminder of what was stated last time we met, full-time salaries would show no change unless the union employee is entitled to a step increase based on years of service. Everything else is assumed to be flat. Part-time in this particular budget is an increase over the year prior, and I did allude to this during the budget presentation, of the need to look at some part-time positions and increase the salary that's offered in order to retain talent. So this is one of those areas where that cost to increase part-time salaries comes to play, to keep the folks that have been serving down at the beach as gate guards, lifeguards, and the like. So this is the consequence of providing a jump in their pay, which keeps us competitive with other municipalities and hopefully allows us to retain employees. Continuing along, overtime is predominantly for assistant position, travel expenses predominantly for the custodial support, seasonal maintenance at Park and Rec. Repairs and maintenance in at $40,000 is part of the O&amp;M expense for maintaining the facilities that are currently in place. General maintenance is a supply line item. The cut that is, you'll see, under special events, $7,000 was in. $7,000 used to be a line item that was carried under Park and Rec. At one point in time, that was the solution to providing senior programs, was money was put in there, which was not paid for by Park and Rec, but that's where the money was put for a Jazzercise program for seniors. That really kind of collapsed with COVID. There hasn't been any interest in it. I cut it almost out completely last year. This year, it's completely out as a program. Bo tells me he could do it cheaper than what the prior arrangement was, and I think now that we've got the program with Christina, there's less of a need to offer Jazzercise. So that's the only real cut between the department request and what you have in front of you from the town manager's proposal. Any questions on Park and Rec?
The equipment cut from $5,000 to $1,000, I'm sorry, did I miss your explanation of that?
So, equipment, last year, there were some things that Bo wanted to do that really should have been in the capital plan. So this year, there's a specific intention with that $1,000 to buy tables and chairs.
To what?
Buy tables and chairs.
I don't have a problem with that.
If there's nothing else, next up is harbor commission. Harbor commission is basically a salary line item. Any expenses associated with the harbor for maintenance and the like actually come out of the Public Works budget. So here, you've got two line items, full-time, which is really just sort of a quasi-full-time, and then part-time, which is the summer crew. So again, this was a request from harbor management to increase the rate of compensation to retain the dock master, which would be the full-time position, and then to provide added inducement to the seasonal staff in order to be competitive with other municipalities and keep those kids engaged with Clinton rather than going elsewhere in order to have them and their experience down at the dock.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
There's a 20% increase in the full-time line item?
Yep.
And I know we have a new person who started last year. What is, what warrants a 20% increase? I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, it's $3,000 odd dollars.
Yeah, in terms of dollars, it's not significant. In terms of level of effort, we're getting a lot more out of the new dock master that we were not getting out of the predecessor. The relationships that are being built that make it easier to manage the dock and working with Public Works, this is supposed to be an adversary with Public Works. So we're getting a lot more bang for our buck out of what we have, and he's been involved in helping the commission with the update of the harbor management plan.
Helping, okay, all right, okay, so like merit pay then, sort of?
Yes, it'd be a merit increase because we're getting a lot more than what we got out of the last dock master.
Not in terms of hours, so just in terms of effort, right?
Correct. There's a lot more, a lot more being put in by the new employee than we had previously. So the relationships and the like that we need to make the harbor work, he's making that work. He's getting the summer help to actually do more than what we saw before, so there's a lot more hands-on and a lot more engagement than we got previously.
What's the season?
May through early October.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you've got part of the season here where he's coming in and coordinating when we're getting people asking for payments and renewals, which take place about now, and then the dock is hot and heavy, sort of the late spring into the early fall. Summer is the obvious peak. If there's nothing else on harbor management. Shellfish is the next budget for the Shellfish Commission. So there's an increase here over the year prior, and you'll recall that we broke out their expenses from being a single line item to giving a little bit more granular detail so we can get our arms around how they spend what they have. So travel expense is reimbursing members of the commission to take samples to the state labs. They're supposed to be bringing meat samples and the like for inspection. One of the members of the commission used to drive past a lab as part of his daily commute, which suppressed the number. That commuting pattern has now changed, so now the expectation is that the cost to bring samples to the state lab will increase because the trips are now all out of the way. General maintenance, there was a request here for $2,500. That was reduced at my level. The request from the commission is that they wanted to take on the expense of maintaining the boat, which is used to help them in their labors in the harbor. It has traditionally been done by Public Works, so I cut it out at my level and kept it as a Public Works activity rather than the commission doing it on its own. General supplies in at 200 is the cost to provide their permitting and the like so that when folks are out there doing their shellfishing activities, that are permitted by us. Other supplies is a line item associated with the cost of gas, as well as markers that are used for when they're citing out sections of where seed clam are growing. So gas is a reimbursement for the expense associated with putting fuel in the boat. Other miscellaneous expenses in at 2,200 is the same as last year. This is other expenses associated with weather monitoring stations and preparing maps and regulations and other materials that are used by the commission in their activities. Their biggest expense is other line, other items at $13,000. This is up from 11, the year prior. This is the program to put clams into the harbor, so there's two types of clam. One is a clam that would be something with the intention of growing and not necessarily being harvested right away, and then the other type of clam is larger, ready to be harvested, to keep interest in shellfishing in Clinton, that people could pull out clams and take them while our seed stocks are growing. The cost of clams apparently has increased over the year prior, hence the $2,000 increase.
Carl, out of curiosity, what do we get for shellfish licenses? It's in this book somewhere, I'm sure, but...
Yes, it's...
I mean, I'm sorry, in total?
Oh, you mean total?
Right.
Somewhat smallish. Susan's here this evening to answer the question.
I can find it in the book.
I can email that to you. It's not in as a separate line item under general fund revenues.
I'd be curious too, because what, because that's what offsets the $13,000 purchase. That's an interesting figure.
I will, I'll get you the answer.
Thank you.
Health is the next department. So this is our payment to CRAD, Connecticut River Area Health District. They provide our health department services. The expense is remaining flat. There is no increase in CRAD dues. And you can see it's been level since FY 1819, as we roll forward into 2324, there's no increase proposed from CRAD. Probate is next. This is our contribution to the Regional Probate District, Probate Court in Old Saybrook. There is, other than the dollar, it's about the same as it has been in the past couple of years, so there is no increase from us to support the probate court. Hydrants is next. So this is the cost for providing fire hydrants in town. So we've got a cost that the water company passes through to us for how much it's going to cost to provide the hydrant itself, as well as there's a charge for the linear feet of water pipe that helps feed the hydrants. So there is an increase, somewhat substantial increase, over the year prior. This is based on guidance coming out of the water company, which is assuming that they're going to be passing through to us some of their increased overhead expense for providing hydrants, so their costs are getting passed through to us.
No new hydrants, though. This is just...
This is existing or what we've already agreed to install. It does not assume that we're going to be adding more hydrants beyond what's already been approved.
How many do we have?
How many hydrants do we have? There's 282,560 linear feet of pipe servicing them. So, I mean, it is what it is. The only real way to control the cost curve here is to get rid of hydrants, and that would be a step backwards for fire safety protection in town. Next is street lighting. So this is now just the cost for the utility to provide streetlights. You can see in earlier years, the dollar amount was much higher. We were financing through the bill the cost to convert from traditional streetlights to LEDs. Once the lease had been paid off through the bill, we dropped to just the utility expense, and cost of electricity is going to go up, so the cost for this line item also increases. If there's nothing else, under streetlights, general government administration. So this is a catch-all department that carries a number of groups that we participate in and the cost and dues associated with that. So going through it, you've got our participation with Middlesex Paramedic. This is their suggested dollar amount for the year. I think you know from prior meetings that they have been holding their cost flat for a number of years, so their guidance to us was $13,400. Contingency is up over the year prior. As noted previously, that's to provide a hedge on where contract settlements could be going, since all union contracts will be up for the discussion of salaries, so that we need to provide funding for that within the operating budget. Conservation Commission is asking for $1,100 to support their activities. Household hazardous waste, cost is anticipated to decrease, given the fact that we've now moved to a platform that does not have a specific location at Essex anymore, it's now all satellites. So the overhead and cost associated with maintaining the Essex transfers, the Essex hazardous waste collection has burned off, and it's really just picking up the cost of whatever is collected at the satellite locations. Each, anybody in the cog region can go to any town. The charge is kicked back to the municipality for what is collected from those residents. Clinton has a satellite collection, and I guess we're doing a good job of getting rid of household hazardous waste in town. Next would be Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. This is one of the major organizations that we rely on to advocate for municipalities as well as to know what's going on up in Hartford. Their dues are flat for the year. Estuary Transit, this is the transit district, so this is the cost for our participation in the mass transit for the bus that comes out of Estuary, soon to be called River Valley The fee is supposed to help match what dollars come in from other sources, including fair revenue, to be a local match for the DOT putting dollars into the transit district. Next up is the Estuary Council for Seniors. You can see that the request has dropped off in recent years. This is their guidance, based on the cost to deliver programs, meals to Clinton residents that are utilizing that service. That group is different than the group that Christina serves, so it's two different, two very different senior populations. Next up would be the dues for RiverCog, Council of Governments. So the actual underlying rate is no change. The dollar amount goes up based on Department of Health population projections, and Clinton apparently has had some small growth in population. Next up at 1,175 is the Council of Small Towns. This is another advocacy group that's focused more on the needs of small towns, which is different than CCM, which includes some of the big cities. There's some commonality in their legislative agendas, but there's more of a focus on the impacts to small towns like Clinton. Judgments, this would be the prior comment about bottled water.
Yeah, I know it's a miniscule amount here, but it hasn't been validated for years as to whether we still have the issues that allowed these people to receive bottled water courtesy of the town every month. Some of them, I mean, when I was water pollution clerk, some of the names of, or the addresses that had water delivery were not even in areas of concern. So it would just be great to validate the expense that the town is incurring for delivering water to people who may or may not actually be entitled to it. So just throwing that out there.
Ready, ready, refresh?
Yeah, ready, refresh, yeah. No, that definitely needs to be, their water needs to be tested because half of them, it's been 20 years.
Next up is funding request for the Tree Committee, followed by a request from the Tree Warden. He did request that his stipend increase from 2,500 to 5,000, given the increased amount of activity he has working with Public Works, added activity from storms and eversource that have been more of a drain on his time, so he's looking for more of an acknowledgement to support, support his service as Tree Warden.
We'd really have to rely on you, Carl, to validate whether a 100% increase is merited there. I know when we have a lot going on, he's extremely busy during storms, after storms, et cetera, but did, is your feeling that this is an appropriate fee for his services or for his being on a call 24/7 or?
Yeah, I guess his level of activity is certainly higher than the last Tree Warden, so there's an awful lot more that's going on. With the rhythm of storms we've had, he interacts an awful lot more with eversource to make sure that they're bringing in resources that help with our restoration, which is something we did not have with the prior Tree Warden. So you're getting, you're getting more than you had with the last appointee. So you're getting an awful lot of activity. He is ultimately the town council's appointment, so it's sort of, you have a stake in this also, but I can tell you...
Was this his request to double the amount?
Correct.
Okay.
There is more activity. That I can validate for you. Next is Historic District Commission at $200. This is a nominal ask. The district asked for money in most recent years, hasn't fully been expended, so I took it down to right-size the amount. Human Rights Committee, this is carrying forward the request that they asked for last year, so that's there for your consideration. They are an advisory committee to the town council. Beautification has asked for $2,500 to support their efforts. I did raise this for you previously, that in November, they are required by the council's charge to provide a plan for where they want to go and what they want to do, and I advised you that it would be wrapped up in the budget. So their request is for $2,500. Maintaining the planters that were previously paid for provides for a lot of, a lot of that initial expense. There are additional garden concepts that are being proposed for the entrance of town, something at the pilot project at Post Office Square, another garden near the Comcast Building, and then there's additional funding for a bulb garden. So it's really up to the council's discretion to decide how you want to fund that one. If there's no other questions?
Just one about the Estuary Council. What is it that we're relying on them for now? Mostly the meals?
The Estuary is predominantly providing meals for homebound individuals in Clinton. So 84 individuals receive over 11,000 meals that they rely on Estuary to deliver. There's another 53 residents that receive congregate meals at the Old Saybrook Cafe. And then...
I'm sorry, what'd you say, 84 people and 11,000 meals?
Yeah, that's what you said.
They're hungry.
How does that add up? Let me do that. Let me do that.
And then there's additional costs associated with those that go to the Old Saybrook site for participating in programs and activities, which is medical transportation rides, exercise activities, preventative health, and other support services. So it's, it's different than Christina. Christina is people that are out active and not reliant on predominantly a meal-based Next is General Government Other. So there's a lot in this budget to go through. A lot of it is, big cost drivers are employee-related expenses. So there's, starting at the top, is $600 for employee benefits. This is specific grandfathered benefit that's provided to a minority of supervisors and no one else is able to receive that benefit. Our social security contribution, OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Contribution is in again at $10,000. This is really funding the administrative costs of the OPEB trust. Under the accounting standards, we are supposed to sequester the expense associated with post-employment benefits and provide a trust. The town has the trust. The town has not been putting money into the trust. We don't really have an OPEB expense other than something that exists on paper under the accounting standards with older employees who are consuming healthcare at a higher rate than younger employees. So there's an implied subsidy, and the implied subsidy is what is calculated as our trust liability. So-
Who does that, an actuary?
An actuary calculates that for us. This is what we have to be accounting standard, appears in our financial statements. Some municipalities that have large OPEB expenses, where they actually are providing a real benefit to retirees, they're socking away larger amounts of money to have a separate pot that they dip into to pay for whatever those post-employment benefits are. Typically, it's healthcare up to a certain age.
Ours is in a trust?
We have a trust. There is funding in the trust. We were burning down the trust with administrative expense.
How often does the actuary value it?
Every year.
So with higher interest rates, the liability would go down, right?
With higher interest rates, you might get some increased value of growth in the trust or not contributing to the trust. So the actuary calculates what your required contribution to the trust would be, and we just, we don't fund it because it's a paper liability. It's not a real financial expense. Next up is state retirement contribution. This is a contribution to the municipal employee retirement system that the state This is based on the guidance they gave us at the end of last fiscal year for where the increase would be going. This is clear. We received an update from them. So it's not clear where they're going to be headed. If they had investment losses, I would expect that this number would stick if they've had investment losses or investment gains with their position relative to interest rates. It might change a little bit, but that's the guidance we're currently getting out of the comptroller's office.
When do you expect that from the comptroller's office?
Any day now.
Yes, yeah.
Because the same is true-
Any day.
That, that future cash flow discounted back in that present value is going to be a lower number because interest rates are higher.
Correct. So if they're, with the actuary, actuarial review of pensions and its issue with the next one that please mention. The way the market went last year, there are losses. So some of those losses have to be acknowledged with increased contributions-
On the asset side.
Because of the losses that were taken.
But then on the liability side, it was the opposite.
So if you're, you're gaining on the investment proceeds side, and I don't know how the state has their stuff invested. So that's, that's why I rely on the comptroller to tell me it's going to go up by whatever. So they give us a multi-year forecast. They tell you, here's what it's going to be. It's one of these things that flushes out April, May. So at a timeline, that's not super helpful to us. We did get it earlier than April, a couple of years back. So it's, as was noted, any day now. So next up would be police pension again. So there's an increase coming out of cost for police pensions. So there's two issues here. One is the smoothing of losses that were realized last year, as well as an update of mortality tables. People are living longer, so therefore these defined benefit pension plans need to bake in an assumption of benefits being paid longer than historically has been the case. So the actuary is updating us to the most current standard of what the actuarial mortality tables are for public sector employees. Workers' Comp is next. This is, this is the indication we've got out of our carrier. They are anticipating a reduction in their rate. There's been a slow reduction over time in their, in their rates, which has been beneficial to us, based on our own risk management as well as the health of the liability pool. Health insurance is provide, is the cost to provide healthcare to all of our bargaining unit employees. This too is a number we're looking to the comptroller's office for to update and give us guidance on. They have an obligation to give us what our renewal is going to be for healthcare in April. So we'll definitively know that in April. They had communicated previously that there would be webinars or meetings, virtual meetings with municipalities and their agents in February and in March to give us updates. They had a series of meetings going into the budget season, telegraphing where they thought rates could go based on current utilization rates. The February meeting didn't take place today, so it didn't take place in February. So my expectation would be there to be some sort of update in coming soon that would give us an idea of where they think rates are going to zero in on. And then that could be an area of conversation. We are a little gun-shy of early indications from them because last year they indicated one rate, and then there was, it wound up being 10% instead of, I think, the forecasted seven, which put a lot of municipalities in a bind, trying to cover the increased cost that was not telegraphed in time for everyone's budget processes. Next up is the pension plan that is provided to the fire department. So sort of the same, same story with police pension. Increased contributions based on investment returns, smoothing investment returns as well as updated mortality tables. Salaries for secretaries of boards and commissions. This is a general line item for those clerks that cover boards and commissions, to have them paid to do minutes. If it isn't an employee doing it, we have some outside individuals that are paid to do minutes for different boards and commissions. Next is earmark for unemployment compensation. Never know what's going to happen on unemployment unless there's a termination. Some people do seek unemployment if their seasonal work has ended. So you have to set aside some funding for, if there is a liability judgment, that we have to pay somebody unemployment on. Town council, cost is anticipated to be flat going into the new year. Utilization, I see the utilization of how their services are used. An awful lot of it is still, right now, tied up with assessment appeals. That's the hot and heavy litigation, utilization of town council to support general legal questions or legal advice for boards and commissions is a less costly expense. For those of you that were here, you may recall that town attorney expense used to be spread out over three line items. We were spending $300,000 or more on outside council for a few years. We consolidated that with going out to the marketplace to get a new town attorney. Everything was consolidated and we realized some significant budget savings, which was realized in earlier budgets. So now we're in, we're in a maintenance mode and monitoring utilization rates. Next expense at $55,800 is the cost for the annual audit. We have a, our auditor is under contract for another renewal before we have to go out for bid. So this is continuing the trajectory of the bid price that was put forward by, by our selected auditor. Land records index audit, this is part of a state mandate, so we have to pay an individual to come in to double-check land records to make sure that they were filed properly and verify what has been put on the records here. Insurance other than EE benefits, which is employee benefits. So this is general risk management. This is the cost for property, liability, casualty auto, cyber, flood, and those other associated lines. There is an anticipated increase in those lines. Some of that is coming from the primary insurer and some of it is coming from the reinsurer, who is the insurance company for the insurance company. Usually a lot of the risk gets kicked to the reinsurer and they have to pony up more money when there's claims. So whatever happens generally in the marketplace has a knock-on effect. We do have coastal exposures that drives our property lines. When you see that there's a hurricane that takes out a chunk of Florida, you can anticipate that come the insurance renewal for us, we will have to pay a little bit more because of the reinsurer's losses in a place like Florida. That's the nature of the liability piece. Next up at $20,000 is advertising. This would be legal notices, bid notices, things of that nature for what we have to put out in the paper for public awareness. The budget ad goes in right now. There is no legislation that allows us to rely on electronic sources. There was a push to get that in the past. I think with COVID, there was an acknowledgement that not too many people were looking at the newspapers for legal notices, and they were looking for town websites for that. But until the state changes the law, we still have to pay the newspaper. Next up at $3,500 is production of the annual report. That's a printing expense. It's also a state mandated thing we have to put together. Electricity was the next expense. This is the cost of all other electricity aside from streetlights. So this would be the buildings and the rest. Again, there's an increase coming in to us for electricity. If you remember, I did shop our electricity back at the bottom of the market to get off of standard offer and buy it as a commodity. The bottom of the market was during COVID. We got, we were at like six cents a kilowatt. So now that the standard offer from Eversource is close to 20 cents a kilowatt, we remarketed our load, shopped it, and we're in at about 10 cents a kilowatt. So we're at half of what the standard offer is. However, it is a 40-plus percent increase coming off of the historic low of the cost of electricity. So it's up, but it's not as bad as it could be if we were on standard offer from Eversource. Heat and water, so this is again another utility expense to heat buildings and provide water. So anticipated increase over the year prior. You can see where we were forecasting was going to come in at around 200,000. So we expect that 195 could be sufficient to cover knock-on pass-throughs from the water company and the cost for natural gas and heating oil as appropriate. Next line item is bank fees at $10,000. There's a reduction over years prior. Now that we're in a growing interest rate environment, we can go back to the old model of how we did banking, where there were compensating balances, which pulled down the fees. Once interest rates cratered, banks all shifted to heavier fee loads rather than compensating balances. So now that we're back to a higher interest rate environment, the banks can make more money off of our money, which pulls down the cost of, cost of bank fees. Miscellaneous expenditures is just that. It picks up a number of side expenses. This includes some oddballs like a rent for a parking lot that's used for Little League, where the town secures the parking lot so that it can be used to support the sporting event. This is also where some of the council's activities would come out of. So the scholarship that you've offered comes out of this line item. The ads that you recently approved come out of this line item. So that it picks up some of these other activities that the council is acting on. Board of Assessment Appeals is the cost of the board to do its, to do its work. The next biggest one is really Pearson costs. So this is our carrying costs for Pearson School to keep it at a level of heat and basic maintenance, keep the fire alarm on, keep the intruder alarm on, so that the building is kept secure and not, not in a, in a state to be considered a vacant building, which would then increase our property insurance. Any questions on General Government Other?
Is the healthcare number you put in what you think of as a last or worst-case scenario?
That's based on the last indication that we had from the virtual meeting with the comptroller's staff. So the first meeting had kind of a big, big bandwidth of what we thought the rates could be, or what they were projecting the rates could be. They were looking at high utilization. Some people weren't really using healthcare, or they were deferring voluntary healthcare activity during COVID. And then that came roaring back, which then was projecting numbers that were coming in higher than what we were expecting, given this spike in utilization. Some of that spike has now tapered down. There's other adjustments that the state has made in bidding out carriers for the different lines of coverage. So they're adjusting, and then the bandwidth closed a little bit more. So we're waiting to see the bandwidth close before April. Because April will have a fixed number, but depending on when we have that, that could not coincide with the council's actions to set a budget that goes to referendum. When we get it, we get it. Board of Ed is on the same healthcare program, so the two of us crunch our numbers to determine what the reduction is if that bandwidth continues to shrink.
Is there a firm managing the pension plan for the fire department or is that just page you got?
There is an investment manager, yes. And an actuary. Next up is debt. There's not much to talk about here. It is what it is. You have to pay it. It's like your mortgage payment. So other than the noise that appears in the general conversation of the budget, of the town being up one year, Board of Ed being down, and then it flips the next year where the town is down and Board of Ed is up, that's just the amortization schedule based on the debt that we have. So it is what it is. There's really not a lot of room here to adjust. There's the operational decision to get away from leasing as a platform to lease purchase vehicles. So we're managing the tail end of those leases for police vehicles. There's still a Public Works vehicle that's been leased that we'll be making continued lease payments on. The push of late has been to have the capital plan fund these vehicles rather than lease them. So the net is that debt, regardless of whether it's Board of Ed debt or town debt, is going down. The voters voted for the debt, so the fact that it's going down- The voters voted for the debt, so fact that it's going down, as that is projected during the budget presentation, we are on the downward side of the amortization schedule, so we will see over time a slight reduction until it starts to drop off a little bit faster. So capital is next. So you have the one-year capital in the book that you all received. Should have been some pages attached to that explain the projects. For your benefit, this is the five-year capital plan, so you can see going out what is in the pipeline, at least as it's identified as of today. Obviously, every year it gets adjusted and new things pop to the top of the list based on conditions, needs, and other pressures that the town has to deal with that make projects and deferred maintenance pop to the top of the list. So first up would be capital for the fire department. Couple of projects here to walk you through. So first up is the fire apparatus replacement reserve, so it's continuing to provide a contribution to the reserve that we have set aside to fund vehicle replacements. Fire department trucks have a tendency not to be inexpensive, and the intent is to, with the reserve, you set aside a dedicated amount, you build up a savings account that helps pay for the vehicle, and we have cash in place when the vehicle has to be replaced. So we're talking about vehicles that are $700,000 to $1 million, depending on what we're talking about. You could push higher than a million. So the need to set aside monies ahead of time smoothes out the budget and takes a little bit of the shock out of the system and gets rid of spikes that might have occurred when money was not in place to fully fund a replacement of a vehicle. Next up is personal protective gear, personal protective gear replacement. This is ongoing funding for turnout gear replacement. So we provide the gear that the firefighters show up in at your fire. Those have a certain lifespan to them, so they do have to be replaced. Next up is a high-water truck, high-water brush truck outfit. So the town had a high-water rescue vehicle. It was an older ex-military vehicle that had reached the end of its service life. The department was able to secure another vehicle. The fire department as a corporation purchased the vehicle. The cost here is the cost to outfit the vehicle for our needs for rescue and the like. Last is a request for town-wide defibrillator replacement, establishing a program for replacement and positioning of new defibrillators at public facilities. Rather than funding it as a one-year project, I did cut it in half with the expectation that the second half would be in the out year of FY '25, which squares with what you have in the five-year plan. And then between the two columns, that which is proposed to be funded for out of undesignated fund balance and that which is proposed to be funded out of capital, there is some thought process on my level for where, what pots pay for what. So the fire apparatus reserve, when we originally capitalized it, I paid for it out of fund balance. There is an acknowledgement at least that this should be funded on an ongoing basis out of the town's capital plan, whether we have fund balance to spend or not. So I proposed spending it more out of taxation rather than fund balance, but that's something that is certainly up to the council's discussion as we go forward. Next up was replacement of the fire marshal's vehicle. So his vehicle has reached the end of its service life, and we are at a point where the cost to maintain the vehicle is becoming prohibitive. So the intent here is to secure a new vehicle that suits the needs of the fire marshal to carry himself and all of his investigative equipment to scenes of suspected fires.
Carl, on his, on his request, it says $80,000. On here, it's 50?
Correct. That's based on the conversation that Jeff and I had during the original budget review. The right number is 50 to get what he needs.
All right.
He did look at some state bids for vehicles and assuming you can get the vehicle, 50 gets him the right kind of vehicle that he needs.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is the police department. So there are three requests here, two pushed through for funding. So one is the radio project. So this is continued pay-as-you-go with a heavy reliance on fund balance to make this project happen rather than bonding it, as it is a mission-critical piece of equipment. This is the most efficient way to pay for the project, and it's in the capital plan for the next two years. Next up would be continued.
Can I ask, I thought, what is the difference between this project and the project that we've been putting money aside for in ARPA funds?
It's all the same thing. So it's building one large pot which we'll pay for. The first piece is what we secured the grant from, which is to replace a dispatch console. That's a computer project. You've got to replace the radios, the handheld units that the individuals are using. So that's replacing the fire department ones, that's replacing the police department ones, that's replacing the public works ones. All of those have to be replaced, as well as antennas on vehicles and the like. So that is also included in the project. Then there's additional work that needs to be done at individual radio sites, as well as potential new radio sites, which give us better radio coverage across town, so we don't have gaps. So that full system build-out is the project.
So in addition to the 600 that has been labeled in ARPA, there's 750 here this year and for the following two years, and the project is 2.25, $2.250,000 total, not a million dollars like I thought it was going to be.
Yes, it turns out to be a much larger project as it was dug into more.
The project is in the neighborhood of about $3 million.
Thought we had it covered.
Yes. The town bought a system that it should not have bought when it bought one. It bought one that was on the edge of being no longer supported by the vendor, and after we bought it, that realization came to roost. And now you have to pay for the consequence of that decision with this project. So we're trying to have a project that will give the town a longer lifespan than what you saw last go around, and something that at least from the computer side of it can be future-proofed, where updates are paid for on an ongoing basis rather than having to constantly budget for improvements. Some of the mission-critical parts of it with the computers that we have, anybody, if anybody's using Windows XP at home? No? No? Has everybody else got rid of Windows XP years ago? We rely on Windows XP for the dispatch.
It doesn't happen.
It's not tax-dляd, they use it for games and all.
It's got a flip phone.
Probably my best one.
We're not, we're not playing games, so.
That's for sure.
And that's what we're currently operating on of. And that has not been supported by Microsoft for a number of years. This is the consequence of prior decisions that have to be reconciled with today. The one item that was cut is the Mako vehicle. This has been requested in prior years. It's not at that point of needing to be replaced, so I cut the Mako vehicle out of the current, current proposed budget. Next up is Public Works. So first up would be $120,000 for a sweeper. This was cut at my level. This is not the cost of a new sweeper. This was what we were looking at as the cost to take what we received from insurance proceeds of the sweeper that burned, plus scrap value, in order to get us a new sweeper. We were able to secure a used sweeper that will serve the needs of the town for a few more years at a cost that matched what we received from insurance proceeds. The capital plan you have, you will see that the cost for, there's a sweeper replacement further out. This would replace an even older unit than the used one that we just purchased. And the other cut that I did to Public Works was the Elliott House at $35,000. So for your reference, the Elliott House is that way. That's the building the Chamber of Commerce is in. It is not in an ideal state of repair. The exterior needs to be addressed. The idea here would be some kind of siding to encapsulate the current wood and paint collaborating. Believe there is lead-based paint on the side of the building. So it's one of those things that needs to be done. It's one of those things that you should be aware of, but it was cut. Just trying to prioritize things as the lowest priority. It was eliminated from the proposed budget. You've got, other highlights include replacement of a backhoe, continuing to provide funding in the budget rather than bonding for road reconstruction. So the town did have a bad habit of bonding monies for road reconstruction. So you fell behind in paving and maintaining roads, then a bond would be issued. The bond was not enough to address the full backlog, and then you paid interest on the bonds for 20 years. The typical service life of a road is 20 years, so by the time you paid off the bond, you had to go back and do the road again. We have been maintaining a discipline of putting money in the budget, which is utilized for an annual paving program to stay on top of what we have, to maintain the asset. It was at $400,000 previously, so this is proposed to be at 5. You'll note in the five-year that you received that the out years is continued effort to raise the dollar amount for paving. We need to be at $800,000 a year to make sure we have enough cash to make sure you touch every road once every 20 years to maintain the road surface in some fashion, whether that's chip seal, seal coat, or mill and pave. Depends on the level of deterioration, the level of deterioration to the road.
Carl, so this year, we have $300,000 in ARPA for.
Correct. So we're mating the 300 with the 500 to get to 800.
Okay. And can I bring?
That's a topic of conversation for where you want to go with that one.
Okay. Because there's also all the work the water company is doing on the roads. I assume that's repaving.
Water company does a combination of pave or patch, so it depends on the road and the extent to which it's ripped up and what is the most efficient way to address the condition of the road. So for some roads, they've given us funding where it's more efficient for us to pave it as part of our paving plan, and they've paid for it to be curb-to-curb sealed. Other items to call your attention to, there's $160,000 in here for what's described as a roll-off truck used. So the hope is that we can find a used one. This would be to take a roll-off dumpster from Clinton to the transfer station in Essex. We are trying to manage the vehicle that takes solid waste to the Essex transfer station. It's currently done in a tractor-trailer. We've been struggling for a while now to maintain that tractor-trailer and keep it operational so that we can haul our waste to Essex. So this would be to provide a different type of approach and maybe eke out a few more years out of the tractor-trailer. Others, you've got a project for this building, which is a wash and seal of the brick. Hasn't been done in an awfully long time. Brick is porous, so it's a matter of maintaining the exterior facade of the building from water penetration.
Generator replacement for the one we got back there?
Yes. Next up is the DCC. You'll see that there was a significant ask from the commission, which included $7 million for Rocky Ledge water, $50,000 for engineering support that would not be addressed by the projects, $100,000, which is a benefits assessment study as part of the process to determine what the rates would be for the community sewer treatment, downtown center design and survey, and property acquisition in the downtown center. So a lot of that was cut, as you know, from the first allocation of ARPA dollars. We provided $250,000 for the commission to do a downtown load study. That is supposed to take place this spring. So those ARPA dollars would be committed. The next step would be with that data, doing the downtown center design. So I kept that in as the next logical step. Property acquisition would also be part of that, but clearly there has to be a back-and-forth in negotiation, determine what you're buying and what that value is. So if we've got to that point, the recommendation would be taking that out of undesignated fund balance and, you know, depending on how much the dollar amount is, either it's approved at a town meeting or a referendum question.
What are the chances of getting through the ARPA fund part of that survey and then on to the downtown center? Do you think we get those both done next year?
As I said, the load testing with ARPA dollars is to be done this spring. So it would be done theoretically by the end of the current fiscal year. So this would line up to have money ready to continue going forward into the next fiscal year. The $50,000 for the general engineering under the wastewater facilities plan, I cut that based on the fact that there's $75,000 sitting out there already, which has been carried forward. So if the need was there to fund it, there are dollars already there that have not been expended. And Rocky Ledge was removed because that's really a council, you're going to have to have a conversation to that effect and an engagement with WPCC for where that project is, where it goes, and that should be bond-funded. So that would be a referendum question also for the public. $7 million is a significant lift to put into the budget. Next up is under the assessor, providing start of funding for revaluation. So in this particular case, it's providing, we would have a statistical revaluation coming up instead of the physical revaluation. So we're trying to put aside the funds over two years to make sure we have funding in place after the end of FY '25 to go out for bid and engage a firm to do the next, the next revaluation. So this is to try and align with a state mandate. So if you cut this, you're just going to have to double it up next year, and you would have to fund the whole thing in one year rather than spreading out the cost over two years.
So the total's 250?
That's the anticipated cost. Next up under technology, so I did cut some small projects here. It's not that I eliminated them. There are some older accounts that could be swept to provide the funding for that. So as we've done in the past, you would transfer money out of an old capital project to provide the funding for the new capital project. So some of those have been pushed through because I just don't have enough old projects to sweep through. So I was trying to maximize what we have from already appropriated dollars to address ongoing technology needs. So we consistently make investments for replacement of workstations to update what we have for the tools that are used by employees. It's ongoing cost to update tablets that are used in the patrol. It's ongoing costs to update tablets that are used in patrol cars for their reporting and the like that they do in the field rather than taking all that work back to the station. It's more efficient for them to do it in the field, in this particular case, the vehicle. Additional funding is in place for network security, for the primary network, as well as park and rec.
Carl, can I just stop you for a second? These police patrol car tablet replacements, three units are $13,000. I mean, that's what the description is.
This is not the tablet that you were talking about.
No, I know that, but I mean, $4,000 per unit seems extraordinary. I mean, this is the best they could do in terms of pricing for these units that they want?
That's par for the course. It's a higher standard than what you would buy personally for yourself. When they had laptops in the cruisers, they were far more robust and resilient than something like this.
Well, I'm just thinking, how many patrol cars do we have? They're going to have to do this for all of them? That's a big expense. And then their first ones will expire or degrade, and then we've got, it's a lot of money for something transitory, you know?
That's the way it is with most of these IT expenses, is that they are transitory, which is why I'm not proposing to fund it out of fund balance and fund it out of regular dollars to reflect the fact that these are not long-lived pieces of equipment. Moving on from technology, Texas. So the singular project that's proposed for funding is the additional dollars to support turf field replacement in IROC. There's 300,000 in ARPA to fund a chunk of that project. I do have an update on the total cost of the project from Park and Rec Director. So cost of the project as of February 22nd is coming in at 648,708. So you don't need the full 450. You would need 350 in order to round out the project. I did assume that this would be something that would be done in one fiscal year rather than spreading it out over two. In theory, you could spread it out over two. The only concern I have is the shelf life for the ARPA funding that needs to be spent by 12, 31, 2026. And if funding was spread out between FY '24 and FY '25, that project has to be aggressively managed and ready to go after the budget is approved in FY '25 out to bid to make sure that we're spending the ARPA money before it has to be turned back to the feds. So in theory, you could spread it out over two, but trying to hedge risk, I tried to put it together as one project.
Change the cost, though, as well.
Correct. So the longer you spread it out, you run the inflation risk of needing more money. So that's up to the council to decide, but you've got $100,000 that you can scoop out of the capital plan right now based on updated pricing from last week. Shellfish, we provided funding for them to secure a boat last year. The dollar amount is really sufficient in theory to purchase a used boat rather than a new boat replacement. So they added funding to up that dollar amount so that they could secure a new boat. We've had a back-and-forth conversation. I need to see bid specs for what the used boat would look like in order to go out and try and get a used boat on the marketplace. So assuming you're following the path of a used boat, I cut that out of the budget. So it's a request for an upweller, which is part of a program that could support growth of clams in Clinton, where we wouldn't have to purchase the seed stock or as much seed stock as we do. But that was cut to try and, we're already at a high capital dollar amount. So I whacked that one out of the budget also. Under land use, funding for the capital for the plan of conservation and development. It's time to update that document. The current one expires at the end of 2025. Again, this is a mandatory, or state-mandated, project. If we don't do it, we run the risk of not being eligible for discretionary grants like steep. The intent here is to spread that cost over two years, so the total cost is 80,000. We are not taking the path that we did before, where we had a committee writing it. The intent here is to have a consultant engaged for the consultant to prepare it. P&amp;Z agreed that that was the better approach. It's a lot of effort and a heavy lift, so to ask a bunch of volunteers to sit around a table and write it is a big ask, and you would still need to provide some funding for supporting that effort. So we're spreading this one out over two years so that money is in place, and we can go out on the streets, get our consultants, and hopefully move forward. Next are some board of education projects. Mary Ann is here to be able to give you some insight on what they are.
Next week. I'm doing these tonight. You ready?
It's capital. If you want to push it to Thursday, we can push it to Thursday.
Yeah, let's push it to Thursday with her. Do you save any time?
All righty. Push it to Thursday. So next up would be revenues. So our revenue stream is comprised of three general buckets. One of those buckets is taxation. Another bucket is state grants and aid that come from Hartford that's passed through to us, and then dollars that are generated locally by user fees and the like. So at the top, the box is currently empty for the current year tax levy, because that depends on where you go with expenditures for how the mill rate ultimately gets set for what that dollar amount would come in at. You can see that the dollar amount for FY '23 is over $50 million. We do assume a certain amount of money from prior year levy and supplemental motor vehicle. So prior year levy is old bills being paid. Supplemental motor vehicle is new bills that go out if somebody buys a vehicle after October 1. DMV reports the replacement of the vehicle. The grant list is updated, and a new tax bill is generated and prorated for taxes due on that particular vehicle. Unlike some towns, as was reported last year, our mill rate is too low to receive a benefit from what the governor came out with for providing motor vehicle tax relief. What he put out in his budget versus where the General Assembly ultimately shook out were two different points, and our mill rate is too low to have that program be an issue here. Otherwise, we would be tracking another line item of revenue coming in from the state. Tax interest liens and fees, this is the delinquent taxpayer revenue that comes in for individuals that don't pay on time. It's 1.5% interest, and that's defined by statute. Next up is some of the state grants and aid. Mashin Tugat Pequat is zero. There was a point in time that that was supposed to help pay for our education, but the state went and hoovered up all that money for themselves. So that's no longer our revenue for us. Not editorial.
That's nice.
Other major grants and aid that we rely on is Town Aid Road. So this is the state providing some assistance to us to help maintain roads, whether it's a cost for snow and salt removal or like. So it's a formulary grant based on our community and calculation for miles of road. Global Capital Improvement is a formula grant, again, meant to help with capital projects. None of these things have been updated to reflect inflation in decades, so the bang for the buck has diminished over time. Pilot for state-owned property, that too is a formulary grant. There was supposed to be an adjustment that was agreed to in the last state budget, so you'll see that it has increased over where we used to be. It still does not truly reflect the loss in value of state-owned property that has fallen out of taxation. The other biggest line item is grants for municipal projects. This is, this too is a formulary grant to help with capital activities. The municipal sharing grant, you'll see that it's in at zero, but we actually did receive something last year. The guidance we got from OPM was don't budget it because the state wasn't sure where its finances were, even though they were projecting surpluses and press releases to that effect. OPM was still saying they weren't sure where the revenue was going to be. The municipal sharing grant is only a function of a formula that assumes the state has a certain amount of excess money. The governor has assumed that they will not be making that payment, so we are tracking zero on that one. Whether it gets paid or not, I guess, is a function of OPM making a decision of whether the state's coffers are full enough to pass along the goodwill to municipalities.
When would they know that?
It would be well into the new fiscal year. That's how it hit last time was it came halfway through the fiscal year that they decided, yes, we in fact have the money, we can pay the towns, here you go. So the guidance we have is budget zero unless something else happens. Budgeting zero is the safer bet. I would not want to budget a quarter million dollars on a wing and a prayer that we're going to get it. That's a pretty significant hole to have to backfill should it not come to pass. Rolling into the other line items, so some of this is revenue that the town is able to generate on its own. So you'll see investment income. We're projecting a large increase in investment income. A lot of this is driven by the raising of the interest rates, which gives us the opportunity to see a little bit more yield on where we're at. So as was reported previously by Sue, she and I did have meetings with our bank to discuss where we were seeing yield and what it should have been or could have been. So we have their attention, and we're getting, we're seeing more inflows for investment income. It's not anticipated that the Fed is going to drop rates over the fiscal year, so we would assume something that would track against where we're at now, if not a little bit higher. Los Am Trust Interest, this is the trust that helps support this building. We rely on the bank to tell us what we could anticipate to have as a contribution from them to support the budget. Town property rentals is whenever we're renting things out. So we had a lobe period during COVID where we weren't renting the building out. That's starting to come back a bit. However, we did give fee reductions or fee eliminations to nonprofits, so we're not back at where we were historically with getting payments from folks. Towards the bottom, the two components of fund balance which are going in is applied fund balance at 2.15 million. That's the roll-up of the capital plan components that are proposed to be funded out of undiscussed fund balance. So that's flowing into the budget as a revenue. This is part of how we've been doing financing of the budget over the past. This will be the fourth budget. We've done it rather than having projects funded out of fund balance outside of the budget cycle at a town meeting where not everybody had a chance to weigh in on it. It now flows through the budget, so it's a truer snapshot of where, how we're spending money and where it's coming from. So this would be greater transparency versus what the prior practice used to be.
Carl, can I ask, I see where it says that applied fund balance for capitals, 2,151.
Yep.
But over here, when we look at town manager projects paid by cash or surplus, it's only 1,951 total capital. It's $200,000.
You got to go to the next couple pages of Board of Ed.
Stand corrected.
The other component of fund balance that's used is appropriated fund balance. This goes as a revenue to help pull down the mill rate. That's the dollar amount that we traditionally use. I did take it up in the year of revale, and then we took it back down when we got out of revale to help smooth out where the mill rate goes for taxpayers. Additional revenues that are generated by departments. So the town clerk has been bringing in a good amount of revenue historically under the conveyance tax, which is real estate activity. But real estate activity is starting to slow, so we are not being a little conservative in terms of how we're putting those dollars in as the economy, gauging where the economy is going to shake out. Police fines and contracted police services, this is if somebody orders a police officer for traffic control. It had been higher in some of the out years for utility work and some of that private duty. We don't necessarily know where that's going to jive and how much we're going to have to spend, so we have brought it back down to some of the historical levels. You can see it's been low, as low as $13,000 in the recent past. Additional funds for, additional revenue out of transfer station fees and scrap metal returns. So this is what's charged to get a dump pass. We do give away a large number of free dump passes to senior citizens where they are paying nothing. And scrap metal returns is a variable dollar amount, depending on what the market is and how much scrap metal actually is distributed. You can see where we are in the first six months of the calendar, our fiscal year. We're going to be short hitting that $15,000 benchmark unless spring brings a lot of scrap metal. Land use fees for planning and zoning and the different boards and commissions. We're seeing a slowdown, starting with building official. It's quieting a little bit and starting to taper down. Some of that land use activity is also tapering down, so we're modifying the anticipated revenue out of land use coming in lower than we were previously. Beach passes are anticipated to increase as more residents want to use the beach. Boat moorings, we're anticipating an increase there based on increased activity. The Harbor Management Commission is going to look also at increasing their fees to help offset the cost that we're realizing for the credit card transactions of individuals being able to pay at the dock with a card to put their boat in the water. ECS is the biggest state grant we get. You can see that it is down, so this reflects the 200, roughly $218,000 that the governor's budget reflects as a cut to us, and because he is now implementing the ECS formula. See, we were up at 6.3 million in the somewhat recent past. We started to go down, and then through COVID, it sort of played out flat, but now we're back to declining. I think the original intent of the statute when it was passed was a 10-year takedown of bringing us down, so we're at 4.9 now. Next year, if the governor's budget stands where it is, that number will be down. Next year, if the governor's budget stands where it is, that number will be down another $218,000. So you should know going into next year, ECS is going to have another drop to it. Special ed reimbursement reflects what the state, it's not what they're supposed to pay. It's what we get, for excess costs associated with special education students. We have to crack a certain threshold before the state starts contributing towards what our expenses are. We took this number down from where we were in the budgeted number of 407,000. Those dollars didn't materialize. I think Sue reported on that in one of her finance reports. So thankfully, we were over in certain revenue accounts, which helped backfill that hole that got created by not realizing the amount of revenue from the state on special ed reimbursement. It's a number that's variable. It depends on what's going on in the school district at any given year, what the IEP, even individual student, is, what those costs are going to be, whether they're treated in district or whether it's out of district placement. So that's it for the general flavor of anticipated revenues. There are some revenue offsets which we credit when we're going into the mill rate calculation. So just so you're aware of what that is. By ordinance, we provide a tax exemption for members of the volunteer fire department as long as they are eligible. So that's a $58,000 revenue expense. Tax relief that's provided to elderly and disabled is about $150,000. Deferred tax revenue comes in at about, I think, 60. The abatement for Liberty Place, which is affordable housing development, is a little over 45,000. They provide us an annual report of their rent roll, which shows us that they're complying with the affordability, which is one of the reasons why they got the tax payment. And then unfunded state circuit breaker. This is, again, another tax reduction program that the state requires, but doesn't fund 100%. So that's how much it costs us. The abatement for Big Y is not in here like it is for Liberty Place, chiefly based on time. So I did take it into consideration when I was doing the mill rate calculation and took it straight off of the grand list rather than doing it as a revenue offset to reflect that. Big Y last year was 100% out of taxation. Now it's 20% in taxation. The land was always 100% in taxation. And then the abatements now kick in for Madison Furniture Barn and Starbucks. So those were, I adjusted those on the grand list side of the equation. And that's the last slide for the evening.
Now the fun begins.
Well, it's not the fun begins. Thursday's the Board of Ed.
No. What are you going to say?
Well, I'll kick it off. I know it's an unusual year, and I can see, particularly in capital. I mean, I know all the other bump ups that we've done or we've seen from folks in the regular general capital. I mean, operational with part times being all bumped up and all. But we have a very unusual capital increase this year because we got 450 for the turf field, 200 for water pollution to do a study, 125 for revale, and 85 for the generator, which comes to 1,600,000. So I'm going to make my unpopular statement. And just to get it out there on the board, I would propose, I know that we had set 2,151,000 against that undesignedated. I'd like to increase that and take another $630,000 out of 155 from designated. That would leave us still $5 million over what we need for our 15%. And I think that's a comfortable level that I could live with. But I think we have to try to make the least amount of impact that we can on the taxpayers this year. And I know that looking at all these things that are here, I don't think this town council is getting ready to cut anything. So again, I'll preface my statement by saying this is an unusual year. We're doing a lot of extra things that normally don't get done by capital. I would propose that we do something unusual and take a little bit more out of undesignedated so that we can accomplish what we want to do to the infrastructure of this town, but still try to lighten the burden to the taxpayers.
What did you propose extra? How much more? 650?
That comes to subtracting all that from that 7,781, 155. And then I took off the 2,151 that Mr. Kilduff already applied. I say that we draw another 630, 155. And again, this is no reflection on Mr. Kilduff. I know he's done the best he can to get everything in there that we can possibly do. And like I said, if anybody can see other places that if we're going to cut something out of capital, you know the operational site probably will never get. And we always just cut capital. Capital is always the one that tours the two years. And then your infrastructure just keeps going down. We don't keep up with it. I know people will say, well, we're going to use up the undesignedated sooner. Instead of going to 2028, we might use it up by 2027. You know what I got to tell you? The people are hurting now in 2023 and 2024. They're not worried about 2028. Right now, these people got eggs, electricity, just like all of us in this room. So I'm proposing we do something unusual and spend another 630,155. That's the start we are.
So.
There's no use waiting until like the last week before we're going to do this back in April or May. Mous, get it on the table now and talk about the elephant.
You're not going to get an argument from me. 100,000 parks and rec cut from that 450, so that's good. That new price came in 100,000 less for the turf, which is great. I'd like to propose that we.
I still said you was going to keep the whole 750 in there because you don't know.
No, no, it's 100,000 down. That's good.
That was his price.
Talking about 450, not 750.
450, that was included here.
Provided updated pricing.
The cost of the turf field is estimated to be 100,000 dollars lower than was put in here.
But we also have.
Very good.
But we also have. But we also have to worry about the fact of that's the cost of that now, today.
Exactly.
So that's not a guaranteed cost when we're two, three, four months down the road. So if we cut it, could lead us to another issue down the road where then we're coming up with more money. Just so everybody knows, that's, I mean, everything is going up. Nothing is staying still.
That was exactly my point. Leave the 450 there because we don't know.
That's coming out of surplus anyway.
What?
It's coming out of surplus anyway.
Yeah, it's coming out of surplus.
What were you going to say, Carrie?
I'd like to, I'd like us to look at paving. I know that they want 800,000 a year, but because of the water company work, we might want to consider that.
I mean, paving, paving is a very, if we have the money to put aside for paving, that's what we should do. Bonding paving is one of the worst mistakes a town could make. I mean, it even indicates, I mean, your 20-year span out, you're putting that into a 20-year bond.
Right.
I mean, it's just, it's really, if we have the ability to set money aside for that, we talked about that at our first council, first go around in the council, that we wanted to do that because that puts the town in a better place financially because we are setting money aside for that. Because bonding roads, it's not a good path to take because you're bonding it for 20 years out.
I was thinking. I'll speak to that because remember years ago, we used to try, we were going to do every four years, we're going to do $4 million. And all of a sudden, things got tight. Oh, we can't do the four. We'll only do two. Well, the road's paid for. So we have to keep a good road project going.
We had automatic speed bumps. They were called potholes.
Yeah.
Cost of paving in the last three years has gone from $160,000 a mile to around $220,000.
There you go.
So, and if you're, if you're 78 miles a road, and if you divide that by 20, you're doing three, three and a half miles.
Just do 80 miles a road. We have 81 miles a road, actually.
Okay.
Eighty miles a road, so four miles a year. There's, you know, 220, 4, you know, there's 80.
I think that's really cheap, actually, Carrie, you know. In a way, with 800,000, that's not going to go far.
Okay. Well, three to one. You guys win.
No, no.
No, no, no. It was just, it was a suggestion. It was a suggestion.
You know, good, good suggestion. I mean, I'm just saying that there's some things we can cut. That's what I'm saying. But I don't really see them.
Do we know what the water company is going to do in the next year, too, like what roads are?
Well, they're not coming up my way because they don't have.
Yeah. And that's a key.
I mean, that's right. And that's not a guarantee either. So that's not.
Right. It's all done down here.
And I mean, they don't pay full amount. They're not, because you're going to give them, I mean.
They just did a great job on what? Lemon Road and down by your area, so.
And that's not, that's not a, that's not a guaranteed number.
That's not a guarantee.
So that, again, is something, yes, they'll give the towns some money, but there's no guarantee of what that number would be.
They're not paving the road. They're paving.
They're patching.
They're cutting. They're patching where they.
It's all they're doing.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, you can't depend on the water company.
What happened last year from the water company, for example? Like, we put 800 aside.
We did not put 800 aside last year.
Not last year.
So last year was, we put 400 aside.
This is the first year.
This year, we have ARPA funding that we put aside.
The water company is going to be up and down. It is not predictable and should not be viewed as, that will be a relief valve. It's a benefit if we get it, but I wouldn't budget and plan around it.
Again, we got next week. I mean, we have our meeting next week. So I mean, these are just ideas that we.
That's why I'm bringing it up now.
This isn't, we're not, tonight, we don't have to do this.
Sorry, last minute, next week.
I somewhat agree with what people are saying here as far as the road work. I don't want to cut it, but I, we certainly have the money in surplus to be able to pay for it rather than get taxed on.
That's money, that's using money wisely. You know, that we have an undesignated fund. We do have money there. Yes, it may not be the most glamorous thing, but you're putting the town on a financial path going forward. Because it's not about us here now. It's 20 years down the road. I mean, it's, you know, listen, how many people complain, complain about the roads? So if you want to be able to sit there and say that the roads are being done and we're maintaining the roads and we have a maintenance plan that we are going forward, we need to provide money for that service.
If we go with Dennis's 650,000, that still has the unassigned fund balance at 25%, which is 10% over target. So you should feel pretty good about that.
It's 5 million dollars.
It's the same thing. We do have items that need to be looked at eventually, including the water on Rocky Ledge, including a firehouse.
Well, though, right, I mean, those are, I mean, those sort of things are, when you look at the overall projects, those are bondable items, right? Those are bondable items. I mean, you're looking at a new fire station. That's bondable. I mean, because that's long-term. Where's that going? You know, I mean, the thing with this, you know, Rocky Ledge, that's, that's a whole different ballgame. Because that's, that's a project that for the town, you would probably bond. But it's also going to be an issue because you have to get people to agree to that in town because it's going to be, you know, an issue as it relates to that. And it doesn't benefit the whole town, you know? That benefits a certain specific area in town. And that, I think, has always been the struggle here in town.
Well, it also benefits the water company because now they can charge money.
Well, right, but I mean, they're not paying for it.
That's what, that was my point.
Right. It's great for them, but, you know, for the people in town, you know, that's how I think they've always looked at it. So that's kind of been the issue, and that's, I think, has always been the pushback as it relates to that. So, I mean, I think, listen, it's a great starting point. Like you said, I mean, you know, operationally, I mean, the cuts, where are they coming from? I mean, if you look at this budget, are there little places that we're going to get some money? Yes.
It's not going to mean anything.
It ain't going to mean nothing.
Right.
My question would be if we, you know, use Dennis's number or a number close to it. I guess I could do the math, but what would that do to the mill rate?
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of next week, but we can get through all that stuff. Because you can have all those numbers.
Not quite cut it.
About half a mil?
Listen, we're not starting out at a budget number that.
Point nine oh to probably 0.47, something like that, maybe a half a mil instead of almost a mil.
I mean, we came out of.
It is something. That's all.
Right. But the problem, I mean, the thing is that we came out of the box. We weren't overly, I mean, the number that we have, you know, the average, I think, was like, you know, 250 a year. I mean, granted, that's a lower value of a home, but I mean, it's still not a number that's crazy, right? I mean, it wasn't, we weren't like, you know, we weren't in a very large number to start. So any little help, like you said, if, you know, things we can do. We'll get the Florida education next week and, listen, like you said, I mean, I think we've been in a position for three to four years. We're not going to get to zero. So, I mean, it's just unrealistic to think that we're going to get to that number again, okay? Because you can't maintain a zero budget year after year after year without crippling the town going forward.
That's correct.
So, I mean, we have to sit there and maintain the fact that we'll do what we can, but going into this saying, hey, we're going to get to zero again because everybody's struggling. We were two years of that. You can't. You will cripple this town going forward, long-term, because we're going to be back to the old way where then we're going to have 10, 15, 12% increase. And then what do you do? Because then you don't have a choice but to do that. That's the thing. So you have to be sort of fiscally responsible when we're making these decisions to know that we want to try to maintain something that's reasonable. You know, we've done well. Carl's done great budgets. This town has been on a great path. But, you know, at some point, to get to zero, I mean, so, I mean, to limit the amount of the increase, I think, is where we need to be.
I'd also encourage you to look at the capital plan for the five-year ladder out because this is a major lift in this particular budget year.
Yep.
This year.
So you're not going to be able to maintain that level of lift. So you don't want to say no now. You're going to have to say no once we start getting into those out years. That's my job, is to point this stuff out to you.
You want some cuts.
Be looking at reductions in this now and reductions in future years. This is not a sustainable level of capital funding because it's reliant on an unstable source of funds.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Carl, for everything. We will be back here Thursday?
Thursday, yep.
What are we doing Thursday?
Board of Ed.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, we'll be back here at 8 o'clock.